Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. Notice is hereby given a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on August 10th, 2022, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted in the Office of the District on August 4th, 2022, at 4:30 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551041, 551050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Present we have Mr. Water, Dr. Lallon, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Sarki called with notice to tell us who wasn't going to be here, and Mr. Donahue. So may please have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance and verification.
Pledge of allegiance by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the daily blessings you bestow on us and for bringing us together once again to discuss the business of the water district. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us as we go through the agenda so that we may make the right decisions that will benefit our customers. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I don't know if he mentioned Jason Sarki being here?
No, no, he said he called with notice.
Okay.
Is that correct? Moving to item three, invitation for the audience to public comment.
I do have a couple. We had a water leak under the causeway, waiting for some folks to get that catwalk up there that was out to get it restored back to normal. But there's two valves at the contractor that we have just seen up at the cornet construction, working on Laguna Boulevard bypass. They installed two new valves, both sites. So we have two new valves installed, and that's within the contract that we have available already with them. They, we closed the water completely yesterday afternoon. They finished. There was a question of leaking water, but now it's been taken care of. It's isolated at the 16-inch valve complete. So there's no leak right now. Until we repair it, then we'll open the water back soon as we can. And then on the entertainment center that we have up in Island, we had told the board, discussed it, that we're going to shut down the entertainment business construction along that Laguna Boulevard. And we're now going back to starting back waters since the contractor has finished all the bypass. So we called the mayor, I think, and talked to the mayor up in South Padre, and they're okay with it. But we can go ahead and start working on Laguna Boulevard. So I just wanted to mention the board that will be out there again, starting them, so maybe the contractor can complete his job over there.
They've done a very slow job on that north part of the Boulevard. I know it's not entirely waters, or subcontractors. Hopefully that part in the middle or the south part will go better because that is terrible.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I think the other contractor that was working with South Padre, they had some issues there somehow. But it's their problem. We've been working on the drought management, Phase Four, and we'll bring it back to the board through it at the next meeting. Because it's completed, but it wouldn't have time to put it in this.
So you're saying they're going to close down the entire entertainment district?
Not the business is the road. I know, but the road is sexual.
Oh, but the water will be on.
Yeah, business is on.
I understand.
That's what he did say, yes. But that's not the case.
I understand.
It's closing the business. Business is about.
Yeah, we had the mayor and staff up there that were set to stop the contractor from going through that entertainment business about month and a half ago, June, July. With June in there, and we did. So the contractor went through the bypass that's up there by the boardwalk.
Yeah.
Yes, that's where they were working at at the meantime. So now they're completed there, so we did talk to the mayor to go back and start the trucks. He's okay with it.
Are they going to put some walkovers or something for those businesses to be able to access? Parking to the businesses that are along that?
Yeah, they're going to do that, but there has to be some way where the traffic can go around and the people can go across the streets. Am I correct on that, Charles?
What they do when they're working in a certain area, they shut down that area.
Right.
For traffic and trouble safety. And then every route of traffic, and we're communicating with South Padre on that with public work.
But are they going to put some walkovers for there's five or six businesses there? So that they can get over to those businesses because otherwise.
I'm pretty sure that they will and will make sure that they do because I know that when they do some construction, they don't do the whole area at one time, just a little at a time, maybe about 50, 100 feet.
Yeah, it depends what kind of vision we encounter. But they're good about doing about 60, 80, 100 feet a day. They should be done pretty quick, barring any unexpected issue.
That's all I have for that. I don't know.
You want us to comment anything or anyone else?
I would say during the other general managers' report and possibly the engineers' report today, I'd like to hear about our water reclamation plan, but maybe just what's on your head, mind, and the desalination. I had some questions about that on the social media. They were like, why don't we have this in the last two years since you've been elected? I said, this is not a project that takes years. It takes decades. And, but I want to put that out publicly because I mean, if I get a question, I like to answer. So anyways, put that on your mind when your agenda comes up in 20 seconds.
That conclude item three. Let's move to item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from July 27, 2022. Motion for approval by Mr. Donahue, second by Mr. Water, all those favor.
Aye.
They are, and we pose the motion carries. Thank you. Item five, general managers report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sherman, members of board. I received the call from South Padre Island Burning Center that there was some water out there, sewer treatment plant that's right next to it. So we went out there and then we called the director that's there, and he met us at the wastewater treatment plant, and then he moved the basement. So we went through and he was saying that the water's coming out dirty. We showed him where the water is going out, and it's pretty clean water. The whatever he encountered was the same issue that we have now with the copper level being so high because they put a burn at the effluent part that goes out to the base. And they did a burn for that water to be retained for the animals and birds and all kinds of butterflies against it.
Hot stuff.
So, yeah, that water retained and then it's going stale. It's just stagnant water that's starting to smell now. So I recommended to them that we'd have to at least cut the burn off. And if they want to retain some water, that they need to dig the ponds deeper at least. We need that water to flow out, at least for them, so they can have fresh water going into the lakes, the little ponds that they have. But the other one is that we need to do that because of the copper levels that one of our engineers has been looking into. And I think they gave us like three years to correct that issue. So we'll be working with the Burning Center and see what else we can do about it. But that was one of the plans that.
But our issue is only the discharge and the water coming out.
Right, right. But the issue that we have is that levels going out are staying in those ponds.
But who built the burn? Who built?
They did. They did.
South Padre Island or AEP or whoever.
It was Burning Center. They have board members also. And they received a call from Richard Fattie also, and talked to him about the issue. But they did the burn, so the water can be retained. So I advise them that on the agreement that we have, that there are three options. We can sell them the water, we can give them the water, or give them the water and all. I told them that's the three options that they have. So we want to work with them, and hopefully we'll find a solution for it. That the copper levels are going to go down, and the Burning Center can get water at the same time.
Was there an opportunity to the airing? Did you guys talk about that, like fountains or anything like that? How deep is it, other little?
I don't know how deep the ponds are, but it's like maybe one and a half feet. You know, a burn is like about two feet, so it does retain the water.
Okay. What?
And again, I'll be working on it to go.
All they got to do is circulate the water a little bit, right?
Yeah.
They need that water to go out, out of there, and at the same time leave some water in the water. Just at one time, stop them from having water. Can't remember what happened. Then he said, the director there said that it dried up, and it was kind of bad for the animals and wildlife and birds. So like I said, we'll be working on it to do. The second item that I have here, the Rotary Club. We went out there last Friday and did presentation Charles and I did on the updates that we have on the bonds. So they were pretty happy that they asked questions and all that. But I think we might have to be doing that to the cities also, presenting those updates.
I heard it was very low. Yes, the communication, people want to hear and know.
They were pretty happy about it. All their questions that they had were answered. They were happy. The next one.
Carlos, do you think you could do one of those at the golf course? We organize it?
Yes, yes, we can.
It's called meeting, and we'll post it and say, hey, anybody wants to come here about the water district?
There was no one that you'd like to have it, who we ought to.
Yeah, can you do it on a weekend or not?
Sure. We can.
Yeah, it's free.
So these guys don't have any hot dates, we'll fit it in. Okay, great. Is that something we can do in the next month or two? They probably asked, they probably asked a bunch of questions about water and how come the golf course can water? More than we could by everyone informed and updated, the easier it is to get future bonds and future assistance from people that we need because we're being fully transparent while we're discussing. Am I correct in telling people like we still have us personally good water reserves? Yeah, like our reserves are normal for this time of year? We're not low. Are we high?
What's the level right down the week?
The reservoir levels?
No, no, the acre feet that we have.
Yeah, I mean, our reservoirs.
Our reservoirs?
No.
The level is a busy, you do a number.
Yeah, just like medium, high, or low?
Oh, they're average.
They're average.
At reservoir fours.
Yeah.
And reservoir three. Reservoir three is basically average. Right now, they're going to start fitting again reservoir four. I think on the Friday.
Pumping again.
We order the water from the water master's office, three to five days ahead of time because it does take three and a half to four days to get over here from the Falcon Base. But on the acreage, acre feet that we have, we still have plenty, Charles. Do you remember the number? That's my question.
No, but we should easily stay within our allocation through December. As far as, yeah, I don't know. I've been tracking it months to months, but we're not in any kind of dangerous territory right now.
So is Amistad first and then Falcon? So Falcon gets kind of low, and then how does that work between those two lakes? Who decides, okay, we're going to release from Amistad and Falcon?
You tend to, the further upstream you can store the water, the more you can save. So that's why they'll want to keep more water in Amistad versus Falcon.
Why is that?
Just I think with the nature of losses or evaporations.
The more they keep upstream of that.
Yeah, that's why I think Falcon, I mean, Amistad's at 33% and Falcon's at 10%. It's just the way they're choosing to store the water.
Combined altogether, or at 21.1%.
The Minnesota's been raining quite a bit in New Mexico, right? So doesn't that eventually filter down to us?
It should, but it'll take like another few more days.
Takes a little time to get here.
It'd be like a travel storm.
That'd be great, but I mean, that doesn't help us, like a storm doesn't, a storm on the coast doesn't help unless that blows up, right?
It blows up, it does. Okay, the next one I have is the ad hoc committee on every other side of.
Yeah, let's get with Jason, and we'll do that.
That's all.
He's the one we have to talk to because he's got a football schedule.
Thank you, Charles.
Hey, do you talk about the water reclamation? Why shouldn't that be more, Charles?
Well, I can pass out a letter because there's some discussion.
He does have information from the.
A trinidad letter?
Yes, have you seen the one there?
I haven't.
On item number seven, Charles has the information on the direct public reuse.
Right. I mean, I don't know if you want to wait till the end item to go to the discussion.
Great, very nice of him to support that. Obviously, we have always supported him. Three and a half years out of here. We supported the project.
Still trying to work on some more facts and more information.
The chairman, members of the board, the month report for July comparison with last year's month report for the distribution department, there wasn't really much of a change. We had 248 service calls, callouts this past July. Last year in July, we had 245. And so there wasn't much of a shift as far, there was some shift on some of these jobs that were called out. But as far as the overall, it was pretty much the same.
Yeah.
In the collection department, that was a different story. July of this year had 57 service calls, callouts, whereas last year there was 106. So there's a difference of about 49. Most of the differences were in clean out and installing repairs. There were some, and then the lift stations, there were 14, and then sewer backups along with sewer taps. There were a lot less sewer taps this July than last year. And then the pretreatment and lift station, the jobs that the personnel did were 11 jobs fewer this, this year, this July than last year. But the overall, it was pretty much the same. It was just the one job order change here or there. And they remain pretty consistent on all the areas of the work that they do. There's any questions? Thank you.
Move to item seven, Charles.
But as far as the annual copper limit, we actually, I did have a conversation. The barber had sent an email to TCQ to initiate the discussions on the issue. And there was maybe some confusion there, so I stepped in and spoke to Peter Schaefer, the team leader at TCQ. And pretty much he sent me some forms to submit a preliminary application. We just basically provided the dimensions of this channel to go straight from route fault by to discharge directly to the base. And like that, we can get dilution, and they can help work with us to reduce that stringent copper. So, so we're basically a good path forward for what to submit next to TCQ to, and then they'll start running the numbers on the streams to help get a less critical condition to have. So that's where we're at with the copper right now. And so basically, the next item here is just an update on the tax bond projects. And I think a lot of that already got covered. The I guess the water distribution, the 12-inch line still hasn't been tied in. And we really wanted to get that line tied in to collect data to fit a water model. Data loggers, we had to pull on July 25th for, they were just needed on another job that recently was a sample. So, so basically, it's the working with cornet, and the causeway area gets finished out. We'll have to reschedule that, that data collection to get a more accurate model. Now, that'll set our overflow elevation for the storage tank. It'll also have impacts on how we're going to size our high service pumps. So that probably affected the schedule by a couple of months. Like, for example, we don't plan to advertise the elevated storage tank in August because I think it's going to be a better factor for us to calibrate the model to get the data we still need. And then, and then finalize the set of plans from there. So, so that's, that's basically the update in terms of getting the design towards construction. Just, you know, give some time to get the data that we need to get the design. It's pretty much where we're at right now for the, for the water tank and the high service pumps and the water. Anybody storage tank, we moved the Horizon equipment. It was done on July 29th. So it's a matter of the contractor getting back as soon as he can so they can get back and finish out any week. And that's still about 100 feet to finish the exterior out there. But all the, as you've seen, a temporary antenna by the Burning Center, that's all the Horizon. So they're, 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 they got out of the way for us to proceed with their lift station work. It's running pretty smooth, working on Woody's Lane, just continuing their schedule. As far as equipment for the lift stations, they'll probably be seeing what wells get here around September. And that's when they'll get started on these sites in Port Isabel as well. And so I guess the other part of the tax bonds is Long Island Village, which is kind of tied in, slid it up, got passed around. And there is a public comment period happening. It opened July 22nd, and it's through August 20th. And that's really for the drafted tenant use plan has been issued where the Long Island Village project is scored with a 70% disadvantage. Meaning that would be the percentage of the lump forgiveness if they're invited to apply. But they're, they're, I guess the catch to that is that they're not on the top ranked list to receive invitations in the first round. So that's basically why we're trying to get people to make comments. And I don't think there's an ability to change the actual score that it received because the information is cut off on the deadline of March 4th. But I mean, at this point, I suppose, any, any public comment to just encourage the urgent need for the project can only help. So, so we had a conversation at nine o'clock this morning. The Long Island Village informed them how to make the public comments and the status of where the project's at. So, so they're working with their templates as well to get some more comments, so they need to help support the project. And then we went to this water conservation meeting and met with the judge. And he was asking for all kind of ideas to help deal with low water levels. So, you know, at the challenge of the meeting, we requested the slider which he agreed to provide. And since it was tied more to the water conservation, we went ahead and started talking about the advanced water treatment facility, finishing the last cycle of this reclaim water project. And, you know, at what point do we want to start calling this an urgent need to get it moving is pretty much where we're at. I mean, the, the next step is to start the lab work. For, there'll be about one year of data we'll have to collect at our effluent for the characterization. And basically, we had that master plan that was done in 2015. It's still valid. I mean, there's been no change in regulations for us to be doing anything different than the guidance we got from our master plan. But the only update is the Senate Bill 905, if I'm saying it correctly. Yeah, Senate Bill 905 basically directed TCQ to provide a guidance document for direct public reuse. In our case, the direct public reuse means the introduction of treated reclaiming municipal wastewater into a raw water supply immediately before the water enters a drinking water treatment. So that's what we're trying to implement. And pretty much TCQ hasn't issued the guidance document yet. But really, the intent of the document is to gather all the current regulations and provide it to basically explain the process for how a public water system, like Laguna Madre Water District, would gain TCQ approval for the project based on current rules and policies. So we're still waiting for that guidance document to be completed and issued by TCQ. But there's definitely going to still be the same exception requests to get through that approval process. But what we can do in terms of a critical path is start the lab work. So we've, we're getting votes from our lab right now and put that in a budget request for next fiscal year so we can get going to the next step. That's a.
So what's the timeline on a project like that?
I mean, I would think just the lab work and piloting could be one to two years, followed by about a year of design and then wait 18, 24 months of construction. So that would be somewhere there.
Yeah, and getting money for it? Now, explain about like what bond was passed that supported that in the past, and is that still in force?
Well, the, the only authorization I got was seawater desal. And then the, with the concentrate discharges, there were really some, some red flags on being able to figure the waste with seawater. So then there was Pearl coming on board, we started figuring towards this direct portable reuse. And, but there's no tax bond. It's specific about seawater, not, not reclaim.
There, there was a full desal bond that was passed. Right. Timeline was about 2008 or was it 2006?
Well, the election itself was 2011.
2011 for that reuse.
For $15 million.
That's a desalination.
Was a standalone bondage. Is that gone?
No, we still have the authorization for it. It's just, so as far as seawater status, we do have that agreement with the Corps of Engineers to start modeling an intake, trying to relocate the site from South Padre Island to Port Isabel. And again, that's another year's study of pretty much seeing the effects of the, in the training basin with the seawater intake at that location.
We did not have the board's support at the time to initiate that public support.
Let's see, what would be the reason not to do one of these? Why would we not just try to?
One of the reasons that with the pilot study that we had, we're not completed. We had Hurricane Dolly 2008, and it destroyed the whole intake. And so we don't have information on the intake and the waste that goes out. We tried to pump the waste, the brackish water down, the concentrate water down the well, but the water was always coming out. So we never could find a way to dispose of that concentrate water. The only thing that, that right now, we're looking into Seven Seas, there's a company that does desalination all over the world. They came by and we've been talking to them for the last three months. And we're waiting on a proposal because they can do the whole treatment plant where we have a room up here at the port of the navigation district. And the only thing that we're waiting for is that they need electrical costs that I was supposed to get one of today. But I, I didn't have time to follow today. So tomorrow, as soon as I give them the information on the electrical costs that we have, they're going to give us proposals for them to do the treatment plant themselves and then sell us the water. And then the other one would be helping us build our own treatment plant and then move forward with it. We're waiting just a few more weeks and see what happens so we can bring that presentation to the board. We are looking into it.
Okay, great. I mean, I would encourage you guys to keep looking into it. Maybe it's unrealistic to do both. Maybe it's unrealistic to do both, but I would like to, to learn more about it and actually make what I feel like is an educated decision on it. I just don't feel educated enough. But I would hate for this drought thing to like, hey, happen. I've done some reading on the Texas droughts in the past week. We have some dust issues in our neighborhood. And, you know, in, in two, in the fifties, there was like, you know, eight straight years where the rain was thirty to fifty percent less than normal. If that happened today, there's so much more demand, we can find ourselves in a tight spot, so. Yeah.
It's, it's the real problem.
Yeah.
It's not being addressed.
There, there's a real chance, like when I first started, I was like, oh, we never have to worry about it. But having sat here for four years, it's like, maybe we do have to worry about this. And in fact, maybe we do have to worry about this. And I think we need to move forward on both projects. And maybe we can't do both, but at least take those steps, so.
What are other districts doing, you know, to stay ahead of the curve or other districts? Are you in communication with them? Is anybody really jumping on it?
One of the problems that we've seen from some of the districts, they have too many water rights that they're not starting their conservation side.
They're not panicking yet.
Right, they have that.
Talking to the county, the judge, who mentioned that everybody should be at the same level. Twenty-five percent, everybody mandates and have mandatory restrictions. They don't have anything in place for that. Now that we're in this situation, they're moving into.
Your water rights are losing.
Right, right.
Because you own a bulk excessive amount that you don't use or they'll become work with you at some point.
I understand. Right, yeah, at this stage with the reserves being negative, they're going to start removing the authorization. So there'll be no authorization to, let's say, less irrigation, that's already happening, they've sent out the notices. So, you know, for example, like seventy-two irrigation district, they're down a fifteen percent. You know, they have maybe two, three months of water supply left to their rights. And, you know, so, so the, the agriculture is a coach at that point where they're much further deeper.
Yeah, that was California, in Northern Cal, same thing happened. They just lost the roots. Thousands of acres.
Great, well, keep moving forward. I mean, look forward to like a good presentation of both.
One of the, we hope before that there'll be more grant money for desalination and the, that they can help us out in building this. And it would be a start for the whole valley because we can.
The ability to upsell water upstream, I mean, that's the reality. Pulse that water as far as you can deliver.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, like I don't know what the capacity would be like of a desalate plant. You know, how much water could we deliver? All our needs, ten percent of our needs? What does it do to our costs, to our customers? You know, all, these are all the things that, oh yeah, we can build a desalate plant and your bill will go from seventy to three hundred bucks a month. Okay, well.
Yeah, well, that's right. Because I think our general, you know, the customer service numbers might get a date, say our microfiltration is about a relative, the sprinkling water, mainstream would be two twenty-five and then the seawater would be a six point. So, so that, that's.
I mean, it's, it's come so far though in the last, I'm sure, fifteen years since we last looked at this. And the costly services are going to really start to come down as the, the volume increases, so.
You're starting to see a lot of the Caribbean islands, Grand Caymans already out south.
Yeah.
Israel and some of these other countries, Caribbean islands, that's their future.
Yeah.
Right, and really what makes the horsepower level attractive is the pass of lowest salinity compared to the rest of our plants. It's only about fifteen hundred. So the concentrate will be about fifteen thousand, just happen to see what a soft concentration. So that should be a pretty straightforward industrial tap on our pipeline after the market points.
To just get a giant pipe, lay it out way into the ocean and dump it.
Well, if our discharge pipe is already there, if we do seawater, we've got to get an intake off the turning basin. For it to get that model and priced out. And then with the.
Sorry, no, keep going, yeah.
Item seven. Item eight, Director Finance Report.
I'm looking to get a couple of dates. One for a budget committee meeting. The, the members of the budget committee are Dave Bauder and Adam Holland. I see when you all are available to sit down with, with staff and go over the, the, the budget that we're working on. And then that would be before the, the meeting with the board. We have a, a meeting with our insurance consultant on Monday to go over the health proposals that we just opened up. So maybe something after Monday would be, would be a good time. We also have on Wednesday, we have the, the bid opening for chemicals, so. That's a big cost as well for them, so. Those are the only dates that.
Friday afternoon works for me.
Friday.
Next Friday afternoon, I think is open. And then after that, it'll be two weeks.
So the nineteen.
Yeah, what time?
Okay.
Can I do that? Three thirty?
Three thirty?
How long do we think it's going to last?
About an hour. Yeah, that should be fine.
That's great.
So nineteen. Okay, and a budget workshop when.
Do it a little earlier if that works. Budget workshop, you want to do those two?
Yes, to see a draft of the budget, maybe before the, the September seventeenth.
Got a couple of Fridays coming up or I.
Maybe the.
You know why Mr. Starkey's going to, if you want him involved, you have to check with national football schedules. So. You want to maybe send, send out a.
We only need three to have a forum.
For the work, so workshop.
A budget workshop.
Want to do it before our next meeting?
And do you have other items besides?
Well, if we, if we have a committee meeting on the nineteenth, it really doesn't give us any time to make any changes before the, the meeting. So if we're going to try to adopt on the twenty-fourth, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have any time to incorporate any changes before the meeting on the twenty-fourth. We put up that it, so September seventh would probably be the, the next chance to adopt the, the budget, so.
So your regular meeting would be fourteen for.
Oh, yeah, the fourteen.
Board meeting.
For the fourteenth, so. Anything, the week of the twenty-ninth or the week of the fifth would be either of those two weeks.
You want to do it just a Wednesday meeting on the seventh at five thirty, work we usually do? Does that work?
Yes.
That works for my friends here. Wednesday the thirty-first. Thinking of Wednesday the seventh.
Wednesday, September.
I can do thirty-first or seven at five thirty. September seventh. So not thirty-first, seventh then.
Okay, September seventh at five thirty.
Or a board workshop.
For a full board workshop.
Does he have other agenda items you want to discuss at that workshop? You have other items on there, strictly budget.
Strictly budget.
Take about two hours.
Yeah, we'll try to get them capital projects and general fund, cover all the, all the funds all at the same time.
We can text that to Mr. Starkey so he knows that we, we're going to do that, say, hey, this is important to be there. What day?
What time?
That's one, it's good to have the whole board here for.
September seventh.
Yeah, that was it.
Nine, the Senator discussed for possible approval of the proposed tax rate to be published in the notice of a public hearing to be held on August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two to five thirty PM and subsequently adopted tax rate. It's a regular meeting following the public hearing.
So if you look in your packet, we have the notice that'll be published in the newspaper tomorrow. We have to advertise this for ten days before the, the, the hearing. On, and that hearing will take place at the next board meeting on August twenty-fourth at five thirty. This is a calculation of the, of the, the tax and a comparison to last year's tax rate. The, the, the new proposed tax rate is six point nine three zero cents per hundred dollars of value. That's an increase of three point one cents. And this is due to the, the tax bond, the twenty-twenty tax bond, which we issued this year in twenty-twenty-two. So now our first payments will be due this, this coming tax year. So those, this will raise up just enough taxes to, to pay that year debt service. Correct, that's all we use the taxes for is just to pay the debt payment for our outstanding tax-acquired debt. So this is actually lower than, than we had projected at the time. We had projected when we were talking to the, the taxpayers during the, the bond process. We were projecting there would be about eight and a half cents to eight point seven cents. And because of the increase in values, the rate is, is significantly lower at six point three.
We do need a, need the board.
The board has, the, the entire board has to go on it.
Yes, if we could have a roll call because the, the notice requires me to list the names of the, of members who are in favor and against. So I'll, I'll need a, a roll call vote so that we can list them in the, of the sheet.
At this time, can we take a roll call, please, Mr. Bauder? For. Mr. Freidman for, Mr. Starkey is active at this time, Mr. Donahue for. Board members have voted, roll call in favor of the bond proposed rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval to rescind contract for lease mailing equipment and software with fifty votes. Motion by Mr. Donahue. Thank you, Mr. Bauder, all those in favor. I, we are, they're none opposed, thank you, Mr. Carey. Item eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of the contract for lease mailing equipment and software. You have an updated version that we can put on everyone's desk.
The previous item that you already approved.
Yeah.
We're recommending on. For the contract of making equipment and software. For thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four with forty cents a year.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue. Second, second by Dr. Alon or all those in favor. I, you're right. Not opposed, thank you, Mr. Carey. And Texas IO twelve, consider and discuss possible ratification of payment for purchasing twenty-four inch rigs and covers for the collection department.
We just went ahead and purchased these rigs that they needed, that we're searching of a street on the island. This is just for the official payment for the seventeen thousand eighty dollars and fifty cents for service.
Motion made by Mr. Bauder. Second by Dr. Alon or all those in favor. Are there any votes? None, motion carried, item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible ratification of payment for purchasing the twenty-four inch couplings for the distribution department.
This is something similar, we had a leak on Bahia Point Subdivision in La Punta, we needed to make a purchase at that ten thousand. We want to head and place the order for fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and for set for ACT price.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue. Second, second is by Dr. Alon or all those in favor. We are none opposed, motion carried, thank you. Item fourteen, consider and discuss possible approval of the purchase of eighty-five eight, eighty-five eight, five eight meters for the warehouse inventory. Back up.
We need to restore inventory for five eight water meters. And we are recommending the board of troops, that's contract to Mueller for the purchase of eighty-five eight water meters for sixteen thousand five hundred and twenty.
What type of water meter is this? That is a residential. How does, how does this affect by the big install we did a couple of years, four, five years ago? Is it the same type of water meters? Remember when we switched?
Yes.
These are smart meters? Are we getting the life out of these meters we expect? No, we're not. The light doesn't.
Joel, you have information on the meters that we're purchasing?
Yeah. We've had some issues with some of these meters. They're under warranty. So we're, we're taking account, we're doing a proper search, we can send them back. But they need to expect them to verify that it isn't warranty issue. But we've been in discussion with Mueller, Jordina and their representative, and they're well aware of the issue that's going on.
Is Mueller the company that we bought them from?
Yes.
So what do we have to purchase more for if they're under warranty?
Well, these are for a new install and if they're going to get run over, I mean, we're averaging, I don't know, three to five taps a week maybe.
Of new taps?
Yeah, the golf ward is going up pretty quick. They just stopped the new construction on the forty-five area. So as soon as it gets, it gets developed, they're, they're, they'll know how it's pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. Great, motion approved, second.
Motion approved by Dr. Alon, second by Mr. Donahue, all those in favor. They are none opposed, motion that's carried. Take this to item fifteen, consider to review the expenditures from July sixteen, twenty-twenty-two through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. This is an acknowledged one item. Everyone reviewed, any questions? Want to discuss anything in particular? Acknowledged by Mr. Bauder. Now, now by Dr. Alon, acknowledged by Mr. Freidman. Donahue, all those are acknowledged. That takes us to item sixteen, this meeting is adjourned at six seventeen PM.